There you go. Sorry, the room was muted.
Uh oh.
You guys, nobody heard that.
Scott, can you hear me?
You have to do this again.
Scott?
I can hear you, Commissioners.
Alrighty, good man. Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
Scott, we're going.
Can we start at the beginning and do the approval again to make sure we got it recorded?
No. Alright. See, that's how we didn't have the button. Anthony didn't push the button.
We've got buttons everywhere.
You gotta watch that button. If somebody said something odd, it'd go wrong.
The only button that gets pushed was ours.
Right, exactly.
So, alright, so let's do the approval of previous minutes of board meeting number forty-four, Thursday, November nineteenth, twenty-twenty, and approval of bills for payment.
So moved.
Second roll call.
Yes.
Commissioner Trappick, yes? Commissioner Ditsch.
Yes. Move on to journal entries, agreements. Clerk of Courts, Scott, you're up.
Good morning, everyone. Commissioners, this is a request for an agreement with Huntington National Bank for banking services for our established bank accounts within our departments. This is for a two-year period, and it's non-general and general funds. And I just wanted to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving and a safe one as well.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you.
You too, Scott. Stay home and be safe.
Will do.
Okay, cool. Okay, facilities purchasing.
Good morning, everyone. This is an agreement for the Justice Center. It's for the monthly pumping of subject tanks, which is twelve of, and quarterly pumping of four grease traps.
Alrighty. Sheriff's Department.
We go to C, John.
Oh, sorry.
C is repairs the auditor's restroom in the courthouse. This was the lowest of three quotations that were obtained.
Okay, thanks, John. Sheriff's Department. Kathy, are you still there?
Kathy.
Kathy.
Ah geez, Kathy, what are we gonna do with you?
A mute.
There we go.
Oh, my goodness.
Good morning, Commissioners, and good morning, Nancy. D is an agreement with this William Holman Tri-P B Systems. This company is going to install a rack in the back of a pickup truck to allow our scales for our program, which we partner with the engineer's office for overweight vehicles. You can pull the tray out and the scales come out easier. That's letter D. Letter E is for advanced RTE to remove our X-ray equipment from our medical department here at the Justice Center, which is, was originally purchased when the building was built in nineteen ninety-five due to the X-ray equipment. It's a specialized service, and this company has won the bid.
Okay. Thank you, Kathy. Okay, motion approved agreements.
Motion approved agreements, A through E.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Vermeil, yes?
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, number one additions.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Sanitary.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. This is a recommendation from the department to the board to award the contract for lentils and masonry work at the Meander Wastewater Treatment Plant to APO Horro Company. We received three bids for the work. AP was the lowest. All three of them were under the engineer's estimate of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Okay, Bill, thank you. Motion approved resolution of awards.
Motion approved resolution of awards to A.
Second.
Commissioner Vermeil, yes? Commissioner Trappick, yes?
Yes.
Yes. Resolutions, Commissioners, O M P, resolution approving the COVID-nineteenth Health Advisory for Mahoning County.
You wanna, Commissioner?
Why don't we at least read the public announcement? We will read that into the record. Okay, the Board of Mahoning County Commissioners, in conjunction with the Mahoning County Public Health Commissioner, will be adopting the Public Health Advisory for Mahoning County. The following will be addressed. Mask-up Mahoning campaign is initiated. You probably have seen some of the things out already. The resident should wear a mask that fully covers the mouth and nose when entering all public places. Businesses and where social distancing cannot be observed and/or maintained. Stay at home. Where possible, residents are advised to stay at home and limit travel outside of the state of Ohio. Residents are advised to only leave home to go to work, school, or for essential needs, such as seeking medical care, going to the grocery store, pharmacy, picking up food, or receiving deliveries. Limit gatherings. Residents are urged to limit gatherings for those that reside in their homes and to forego having guests in their homes during the upcoming holiday seasons. The Board of Mahoning County Commissioners wishes to support a joint effort by the metro counties in Ohio to stress the importance and put in place a stay-at-home advisory to limit the spread of COVID-nineteen virus. These advisories shall remain in place to coincide with the twenty-one-day curfew set by the governor and the mask-up Mahoning campaign that will be in effect till the end of twenty-twenty.
Thank you.
That is the press release that we put out to promote the program and to let everyone know that, you know, we are doing this in conjunction with the seven metro counties who have all passed similar resolutions and stay-at-home public announcements. Let's see, I'm trying to see where. Yeah, I was just seeing if there was a list of the counties, the seven. Here we go. Yeah, the participating counties are Franklin, Cuyahoga, Hamilton, Summit, Montgomery, Lucas, and Mahoning. So we do a conference call with those counties every other Monday, along with Governor Dewine and Lieutenant Governor Houston, and get a lot of great feedback and input from both of those, our governor and our lieutenant governor and our other counties. And even though, you know, we don't necessarily have the authority to create curfews and do different things as county commissioners, you know, the large cities, the incorporated areas do. So, in conjunction, like in Franklin County, the city of Columbus has put out all these mandates, and they work with the county commissioners to make sure that they're doing it countywide, but mandated, obviously, in the incorporated areas. So, in conjunction with our largest city, Youngstown, and Mayor Tito Brown, you know, he has already placed a lot of these initiatives into effect with respect to the city of Youngstown. And we're requesting that the county in the unincorporated areas and the incorporated areas that haven't passed similar to the city of Youngstown, that they do the same, you know, and follow the same rules and so that we can all. Carol?
And my two partners know this. I'm adamant about the mask-up for all county employees. I'm also adamant about the staying at home for the holidays. None of us want to be without the rest of our families. But this year, for one year, go on a Zoom call, look at your families on Zoom, have a dinner, do a game on Zoom, whatever it is to be safe, but do not have gatherings. Be safe. Mask up. You know, if you want to use a restaurant to order your dinner, that's fine. And you pick it up and you bring it home in your own area. I mean, I'm big on this. I say it every meeting, I think maybe, and I don't care how people get sick of hearing me say this, I'm gonna say it every day until we have a vaccine that clears this up. And with God's will, that will happen as well. So, please have a beautiful holiday, stay safe. That's all I can say.
And just to give you a little specifics as to why. You know, Mahoning County has experienced one of the most rapid increases of the COVID-nineteen from any county in the state. Cases with an average, we have an average of seventy-seven cases a day from November one to November seventh, we had. We had an average of a hundred and twenty-six cases a day from November eighth to November fourteenth, and an average of a hundred and seventy-one cases per day from November fifteenth to the twenty-first. So in the past three weeks, daily, just in Mahoning County, seventy-seven, one-twenty-six, one-seventy-one. So, it's a terrible trend that we're on. Mahoning County has experienced a single-day high of two-hundred-and-thirty-six confirmed positive cases for COVID-nineteen. The single-day high over a fourteen-day period has risen from seventy-two confirmed cases on November fifth to two-hundred-and-thirty-six positive cases on November nineteenth. So the number of hospitalizations in Mahoning County has significantly risen and from any, at any one time during the pandemic, which is left unchecked, has left unchecked, which left unchecked poses a serious and substantial risk to our healthcare system. Obviously, just to say that Dr. Kravik has said that, you know, we're, we are slowly reaching capacities in our healthcare system and our hospitals. And, you know, we really need to do something to pull it back because, you know, right now, what's happening before, early on, we had a lot of people that were elderly, in their eighties, that were vulnerable and dying. And now we have a lot of healthier people that are going into the hospital, that are needing hospital stays. And, you know, the hospitals are filling up. We, thank God, haven't had as many deaths as early on, but the positive cases are consuming the hospitals and consuming the ability to make sure that we have the equipment to take care of everyone that has a need. So, you know, we don't want to see our desk go up because we don't have the respirators, the beds, and the ability to serve the ones that are sick. So, please, anything like that.
No, I agree with Dave. I mean, the numbers and figures don't lie. And basically, what's driving this model is the fact that our hospitals are becoming overrun. And when that happens, you know, there's other people who may need to use that hospital, not just for the virus, but have regular operations, they will not be able to go to the hospital. I know Pennsylvania, their hospital system is totally full. So this could not have come at a better time, and I believe Governor Dewine has done a fantastic job in putting out guidelines for counties like us that we need to follow. And as Carol and Dave said, you know, we do need to mask up and try to protect one another.
And that, what's in the resolution is part of what, it's the easiest things for us to do as residents of Mahoning County. Mask up, stay at home, limit gatherings. I mean, it's not like we say this every week because we like to hear ourselves talk about it, but we say it because it's absolutely true. I mean, you can't tell your employees when you leave work, you can't go out. We're not saying that. What we're saying is limit that to going to the store, to the drugstore, just the immediate things you have to do. That's the important message that we need to do to tell our residents and Mahoning County employees. So, I know, that, I mean, I continue to say the same thing every, every week. You know, so, and I'm gonna do it till the end of the year until we're safe. Sorry.
You know, I went up to, I hate to say this, I went up to the grocery store last, yesterday evening, five o'clock, and I'm telling you, it was jammed. You know, obviously, because the holiday coming up and people getting food. And, you know, so I went up there, and it was, it was heartwarming to see, everyone had a mask on. I don't think I passed anyone in the grocery store that didn't have a mask. And then I came across a woman that was elderly, and, you know, she was pushing her buggy, and she had no mask on, and she was, you know, going up and down the aisles. And, you know, when you're going two directions in the aisles, I mean, you're basically almost bumping carts. So as I went past her, I turned and I said, excuse me, ma'am, I said, if you didn't have a mask when you come in, I'm sure they're available for you to be able to get one at the door. And she looked at me and she said, I have a condition, I don't need to wear a mask. And I said, really? I said, you know, I said, then you can get your groceries delivered to you, you know, so that you, you're not vulnerable when you go out, or that you can get help. And she looked at me and she says, mind your own damn business, and she walked away. And I thought, okay, okay, you know, I mean, I was trying to be helpful, but, you know, I, you know, some people, you know, just either don't care or don't want to, you know, follow the rules because they don't think they need to. But, you know, it really is proven that it helps. So, you know, it's unfortunate that anyone would put themselves or others at risk by not wearing one. Okay. We'll move on past Resolution A. Audrey, do you want to?
Yes.
To go to B?
Commissioners, resolutions A, B, and C are the original appropriation resolutions. B being for the General Fund Appropriation Resolution.
C, C, and D.
A, B, oh, B, C, and D, sorry. C being the Criminal and Administrative Justice Fund Appropriation Resolution, and D being the Non-General Fund Appropriation Resolution. Want to say, we, the Commissioners have decided to have their hearings for anything that was not funded at the beginning of next year due to COVID, but pretty much departments' requests were in line, and I think everyone did a really excellent job in their requests and understanding the situation that we're currently in, and Commissioners' balanced budget.
Thank you, Audrey.
Audrey, you're welcome.
And your team.
Yes.
Thank you. Through all this. Knock on wood, huh? Okay, engineers, Pat?
Commissioners, this is a resolution approving the moral obligation payment of two-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars and eighty-one cents to do cut sales and service for the purchase of a bench chain grinder and a saw chain for one of our chainsaws.
Okay, Pat, thank you. Sanitary, Bill?
Hi, yes, Commissioners. This resolution is a request by a developer to extend a water line in Gibson Road in Cantfield Township. He's requesting authorization to construct this water line and file under provision of the Ohio Revised Code of three-oh-seven-point-seven-three that will permit him to recover costs from non-participating properties. And G is a resolution approving a moral obligation payment. This was related to sludge from the Meander Plant that was determined to be exceeding the limits of a certain element. It was iodine one-thirty-one. The sludge had to be put into special containers and allowed to set out before it was able to be disposed at the landfill. Cowboy Industries was the company that provided these specialized dumpsters to hold the sludge until such time that it met the conditions that we could take it to the landfill for proper disposal.
Okay, beautiful. Thank you, Bill. Sheriff's Department. Kathy? Kathy, there's a, there's a gentleman behind you. Is that?
That's the big boss. He came into, actually, I'm being graded, and he came in to see how I performed today. So I'm a little nervous. Please forgive me if I make any mistakes.
Are you grading him or are you grading him? Who's that guy that used to wear the mask in the scary movies? What was his name?
Oh, Ozzy.
No.
All right, letter H. Letter H is a resolution asking for your permission on a necessity to purchase a two-thousand-and-twenty-one Chrysler Voyager van from the L E S O Auto Choice Program, which is necessary for the operations of the sheriff's office. Letter I is requesting your permission to purchase two vehicles from the Ohio Surplus Department of Administrative Services Surplus Program. These two vehicles are being used with insurance monies from accidents which happened over the summer in order to replace the two vehicles that we lost, one run into Columbus with N-ninety-five mask and Sergeant Bob Smith's accident in Coatesville.
How did you get it for two thousand, ten thousand dollars?
They used.
They used. It's cheap. It's going to, and still cheap. All right, thank you, Kathy. Very reasonable. Are you training the gentleman behind you, Kathy, to, you know, to fill in for you when you're off?
No, sir. He trains me every day. I work for him.
Good answer, good answer.
Amazing how he just looks at you from behind. Do you feel that vibe?
Sheriff, you know what? I was gonna send you a picture.
He doesn't hear me.
Sheriff, can I, Sheriff, I was gonna send you a picture of you and myself and Jenna and Hannah serving food at the Austintown Senior Center from about five years ago. And Hannah was just a little pee-dat, and, and we were standing in line, and I thought to myself, oh my God, I had twice as much hair, and both of us were twice as skinny. And I was gonna send the picture, and I said, I'm not gonna do it, I'm not gonna do it. But, you know, it's, we gotta get rid of this mask and COVID so that we can, you know, get back to keeping in shape.
You could still run in the park.
That's right. Well, you know, I.
And Jerry's just looking at me like, really?
I run it every day.
Yeah. All right. Okay, thank you, Kathy, Sheriff. A motion to approve resolutions.
Motion approved resolutions, A through I.
Second.
Roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Call for the good of the order. Sheriff, since our, at that point in the meeting, anything you'd like to add for the good of the order?
Okay.
I can't even get up.
Good morning, Commissioners. Yeah, one thing that's, it's kind of bothering us big time is that, you know, you mentioned the Thanksgiving for the seniors program that we did this year, and just based on the COVID and the fact that the senior center is shut down, and the fact that I didn't want to be responsible, or having my guys go out to other people's homes and dropping off food, we, we decided that that's a no-go this year, and it's, it's killing us because we know that this is something, well, obviously, it's something we love doing. Sheriff Wellington started it. We, you know, grabbed the baton, took off with it, and we're just gonna be unable to do it. In fact, we ended up, we had forty turkeys that we didn't, you know, that we had purchased and basically didn't know what to do with, so those went to Second Harvest Food Bank for Mike Iberus to do with whatever he sees fit. But, yeah, kind of a bomber this year. It's just another reminder to everybody, you know, about how important the social distancing is and the wearing of the masks. Everything else is okay. Our officers, we got, I don't want to say quite a few, but we, you know, we're starting to get hit with our employees, you know, with the COVID here and there. Nothing massively spreading or anything like that seems to be, the people are still getting at home when they let their guards down, and we just have to be careful of that, especially over the holidays.
Thank you, Sheriff. And Sheriff, also, and I know that you were cooking the turkeys and everything to pass dinners out, but I do believe from the food drive that we had Saturday that we have turkeys left over. So if there, if there's a list or something that you repetitively delivered to, we do have ten to twenty, ten to fifteen pounds smaller turkeys that are left over that we could take and deliver or have them taken out in the next couple of days and dropped off. Now people would have to cook them themselves, but it would still give them an opportunity, perhaps, to have a turkey that they wouldn't have. So, maybe we could talk if there's a list together, something that we could do with conjunctions of veteran services.
We might be able to do it with Joe Iberus on the kids when they drop the.
Yeah.
He'll be able to drop the turkey with it.
Yes. Yeah, with Joe Iberus, Audrey mentioned, from the senior center, which is not called, or senior, is not called a senior level.
The kids program that you guys are doing.
The kids program through Joe Iberus. I think he does a drop.
We'll talk about.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jerry.
Thanks, Jerry. Jerry, thank you for your job and the job that your department does. They do an amazing job on behalf of Mahoning County, and as you, as well, you and Kathy, and Jeff Allen, as much as it pains me to say Jeff Allen, too, you know, you guys do a great job because I like to remind Jeff that, you know, Dave Allen is the greatest officer, last name Allen, that I know, so. But Jeff's a close second. What do we do, Jerry? Thank you, Sheriff.
Nobody likes you, Dave.
All right, any, anyone else out there? Pat? Bill, anybody like to, for the good of the order? Any department ads, any?
Audrey.
Audrey?
Couple of things. I was talking to Dwayne Pichorelli from the Mental Health and Recovery Board, and he wanted to encourage, he wanted to encourage people to make sure, this time, make sure those people who are by themselves or whatever, give them a call, give them a Zoom meeting or something with our seniors, as Jerry said, you know, find a way to make a connection that is safe and social distance, but still make the connection because there are a lot of people who are in isolation. And this is time very strong for mental health, and mental health issues are occurring right now. Mental Health and Recovery Board is putting a video on, on just the suicide and trying to prevent those things. In addition, they're gonna be working with the Commissioners, Commissioners, I'll let you know this, and doing something to tell people, to reach out to people, to make sure during COVID that don't forget that senior that's at home by themselves, things like that. And so they'll be working with you guys to set up a public service announcement on that, too.
Thank you.
When are they thinking of doing that?
I will be working with you guys and then studying that with Dwayne.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else that's on, on the meeting, would like to make a comment? I don't know if Joyce Karpasta is there. I see her name on the meeting. If Joyce is there, Joyce, you're muted, muted yourself if you're online. Unmute yourself, and you could add in, see if you're texting me saying I'm.
There's two of them for Joyce.
Yeah. Okay, any, anyone else? No, Pat? Scott, anyone? Okay. All right, so we'll move to the board. Carol?
Well, I think I already said what I wanted to say about the mask-ups, be safe. Pay attention to your surroundings. Do not allow yourself to be caught up in anything where you don't have a mask on and you're in a, in a large crowd. I mean, we all have to button up and do this at least until the end of the year where we're safe. I want to wish everybody a very happy and blessed Thanksgiving. I want to thank everybody for everything they did up until this point with COVID, Audrey and her team, Anna, Karen, Jimmy, Nancy, the Commissioners, and everyone else that's on this call, as well as calls of last week. All I could say is be safe. Watch what you're doing. Watch what you're doing and just be aware of your surroundings. We're in scary times. And hopefully, we'll have a vaccine in the next couple of months. And this, too, in the next year will be something we look back on to tell our grandchildren and then their grandchildren that we have experienced a hundred-year pandemic as the woman in the newspaper, hundred and what, hundred and some years old, was part of that with the Spanish flu and her mother passed, and she's here to talk about it. So hopefully, if we all do what we're supposed to do, whether we're employees or just regular citizens out there, let's just be safe. Let's all do what we need to stay safe. And God bless everybody. I'm done.
Thank you, Carol.
Thank you, Carol. And of course, I agree with Carol and Dave. I mean, you know, cases and hospitalizations are at the highest they've ever been since the pandemic started. So do what's right. Wear a mask. Last night, I have to say this, that a lot of, while I'm speaking, so it's easier for me to speak. In Poland, there are about a hundred and twenty families that are needy. So last night, I was asked to come with about fifteen Poland guys that have been doing this for the last fifteen years. Everybody kicks in a hundred, two hundred dollars, and we go to Save-A-Lots in Struthers, and we purchased about twenty-two hundred dollars in food to fill the Poland Methodist Interfaith pantry that I did not know existed in Poland. And that will help feed those families. And we have to thank Save-A-Lot, Henry Nemitz's son, who runs it, was very generous. And we took a lot of items out of there. We restocked the entire pantry, and the Reese family actually runs it, and I was shocked to find out that most of the hundred-some families that are in need are elderly people who have lost their husbands, who had pensions, the pensions were delineated, and there are people there who need food. So I want to thank the Reese family. I want to thank Bob Richards, President of the Community, Poland Baseball, John Medina, and everybody there who have done this. They asked me the first time this year to do it, and it went really well. And, you know, Dave, you had an incident at the grocery store. Well, I had one that night. This young lady refused to wear a mask, and it got pretty heated between the store manager and one of the employees there. She just would not put a mask on. So it got ugly. But other than that, it was a beautiful thing. I want to wish everybody a happy and healthy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome.
I, too, would follow up with Carol and Anthony on their taste in the inside. Follow up with their comments. But I wanted to add, just normally at Thanksgiving time, I say to people, you know, and often, that, you know, that all of us in this room are a lot more fortunate than a lot of people out there. So especially at Thanksgiving, make sure you go out and make sure you do something for others that they can't do for themselves. And normally, there's a select few, and there's an easy way to identify those people. But today, you know, it's us. You know, it's all of us. You know, when Anthony and Carol and I are at the food lines for the veterans passing out food, I mean, people are going through those lines that are our neighbors, our friends. One of the individuals that went through, I was standing with a gentleman that owned a company, and he said, he said hello to the woman going through, and I said, you know her, and he says she works for me. And, you know, and we're not working. And so it's a lot more and a lot different group of people today because, you know, I was passing out, the Kennedy family does an amazing job that owns Utter Cream here in the Valley, and they come to all the food drives and pass out sanitizing and hand cream. And they were there passing it out, and I was passing their stuff out. And the people going through, there was a young girl helping me pass the Utter Cream out, that one of the cars that went through was a pretty nice Cadillac. And the young girl says, wow, their cars are a lot nicer than mine. And I looked at her and I said that most families are about three paychecks away from needing help. You know, because, you know, the world isn't built off of 401Ks and the stock market. You know, a lot of people, like all of us, live beyond our means. And if you lose a paycheck for three or four pays in a row, you know, you're trying to keep your house payment going, your mortgage, your rent, your car payment, but you're lacking in the essentials, which are a lot of your food and your products that you need, you know, daily. So a lot of people going through those lines are people that need help, that would not normally need help. So we really need to focus on people, our neighbors, our friends, and make sure that, you know, because like Audrey alluded to and Dwayne Piccarelli and deals with daily is, you know, the suicide rate is up, the rate of, you know, of abuse is up. All the departments that we see on a daily basis, the jobs and family services, the needs for food stamps and assistance and the utility assistance and all the things that we put out to CARES dollars are all up so much that there is really a need for the average person that's your neighbor. You know, call your friends that you haven't talked to in a while. You know, call your family that you may not talk to. How many people out there have, you know, I haven't talked to my brother in eight years, you know, because we got into it, we don't talk. You know, I mean, I'm not saying that because I don't have a brother, but, you know, there's a lot of those instances out there that you don't have an opportunity to catch up with if it's too late. So do some things differently, do some things that you need to do to make amends and to help your fellow man. And I really want to say, you know, I joke with Sheriff Green a lot, and but his department, you know, throughout all of this pandemic, you know, those are people that don't have the ability to work from home, don't have the ability to, you know, work half on and half off. Those are like, you know, your healthcare workers. You know, they're there every day doing the job. And they've done an amazing job to weather the storm in the pandemic and throughout the deputies in the jail, the deputies that are in the departments that are standing at the doors, you know, making sure that everyone's safe and taking temperatures. I mean, they're doing things that, you know, you'd never believe a year ago that they'd be asked to do. And, you know, they've done a yeoman's job in every respect of the situation. So really, my hat's off to Jerry Green, Sheriff Green and Kathy and all of his, and, you know, and all of his crew, his staff internally, as well as, you know, that are out patrolling the streets and working the jail. I mean, that's a tough situation confined, you know, that they are weathering the storm with and doing an excellent job, as is all of our departments and all of our elected officials and all of their crews and staffs and, you know. God bless them all and, you know, thank them. Happy Thanksgiving.
One more thing. Assistance, this came to mind when you talked about the food drive. There's still assistance with Catholic charities. If you need help, if you know anyone who needs help with your utility bills, your rent, things in your home, there's assistance there that they've put in place that Anna and Audrey put in place with Catholic charities and MyCap. If you say you can't get through, continue to call them. Continue to call. They're busy. But there is money there to help you get through this that we've given through the CARES Act. So please, don't hesitate to do it. You know, you don't need to worry about where you live or what you do for a living and why you're not working, but if you need help, it's there. Go and use everything you can to help your families and yourself.
Oh, I want, you know what? I want to say one more story that really upset me because we, as a county, we took some of the CARES dollars. And normally at Christmas time, the sheriff's department and a lot of the other FOPs in the county do a shop with a cop type scenario. And they help families that are in need on a basis outside of the COVID. And so this year, we literally allocated two hundred thousand dollars from the CARES money to go to that program and, well, a spin-off of the program, not that one specifically. And so the FOP president for the sheriff's department, Joe Iberus Jr., he got all the FOPs together that were in Mahoning County. And they met and tried to decide, how are we gonna do this? You know, let's work, and to make a long story short, let's work with the school systems in each of the communities and get a list of families in need because we want to give five hundred dollars to four hundred families. So each political subdivision, their FOP came in and they selected a hundred dollars for the number of families. And the way we did it was, we did it by per capita or a necessity of the size of the school system. Like the city of Youngstown, you know, and I'm just using arbitrary numbers that I think are close, got like eighty families. Austintown got sixty-five, Boardman got like seventy, you know, deporting on the size. Deporting on the size, okay? And so that's how they were allocated. So each of the FOPs took a hundred of the certificates, a hundred dollars worth, and they went to the local, some of the local restaurants to be able to put a hundred-dollar gift card in for local restaurants. Well, they decided the other four hundred dollars, let's get the family the biggest bang for their buck, and let's get them a four hundred dollar gift card to Walmart so they can get food, clothes, school supplies, whatever they need. And here's a situation when a company gets too big, too removed, and too out of touch with the communities that they reside in, that keep them going. Joe Iberus, myself and others went into both Walmarts multiple times. They could not figure a way how to spend a hundred and sixty thousand dollar check that we had to give them to provide us with four hundred, four hundred dollar gift cards. We talked to the store manager. We asked him to march it up the ladder. Get us the next person. Not available. Get us the next person. Get us anyone not available.
So who'd we end up doing it with?
Get online. They told us, fill out an application and a request. Open an account online, deposit your money, tell us what you want to do, and within sixty days, you know, we'll get back with you and perhaps we'll be able to send you gift cards. So when we exhausted every local effort to try and get this done, you know, I gotta hand it to Joe Iberus Jr. He went into Giant Eagle. And Giant Eagle has a rack of gift cards, right? A rack of gift cards. Well, he talked to the store manager at Giant Eagle and said, here's what we got, and explained it to him. And the only other store that we could figure out that had that kind of volume or that kind of ability to be diverse in the product line was Target. So the Giant Eagle is working with Joe Iberus Jr. and the sheriff's department and going to scan four hundred, four hundred dollar gift cards to be able to provide to those families that Walmart didn't want to find a way to do. Or the web of complexity, the web of complexity with someone that big wasn't able to do it because there's no personal touch. You know, Sam Walton's probably spinning in his grave because, you know, he was all about buy American, build, you know, manufacture in America and everything, and now it's just, you know, money, 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 you know. So thank goodness the sheriffs and Joe Iberus being able to do that. And the other thing that I added to the equation was, I said to Joe, you make sure that the FOP or that the Giant Eagle opens us an FOP account so that we can get free gas from buying the gift cards like we all do at the get-go so that we're able to use it to get gas for our police cars and, you know, for whatever county needs there are. So Joe Iberus Jr. is doing that to make sure that we can try and get recoup, recoup money for the sheriff's department, for the gas for the county. So anyway, that's my last story.
Thank God. Put your mask on and shut up, you sheriff. I'm sick of it.
Carol, you can stand on the other side of the door and look through the window if you want.
Well, that's what I am.
Okay, anyone else?
I was gonna have Anna just give you the phone numbers that they can call for the-
Okay, yeah, for any of the assistance.
Anna? Good morning, commissioners. So for Mahoning Valley Economic Development Corp., which is now called Valley Partners ED, that telephone number for small business relief dollars is three three zero seven five nine three six six eight. And then Catholic Charities is their phone number. They also have mortgage and utility assistance and the assistance for food. And their telephone number is three three zero seven four four three three two zero.
And the deadline for applying is December fifteenth for any applications?
The fifteenth for Catholic Charities will be the last day they process applications. And the last day that they're taking applications for the small business relief is December seventh.
December seventh, okay.
Is what?
December seventh.
And is that it, Audrey? After that? There's no more? That deadline's final?
If there's money left, could they still-
Any money that is not, then is reverted back to the county. We have till the twenty-eighth to spend or suspend the money or at least have an invoice that's on its way to pay. After that, anything that's left over has to revert back to the state, and then the state has to turn it back over to the federal government.
So you can't use, if Catholic Charities doesn't use it all, they can't like for, like-
Right now. And I met with Catholic Charities. They processed about a four hundred applications. About three hundred have been processed, and they have about another hundred that they're dealing with right now. They've spent approximately four hundred and something thousand right now. We just cut them the second check this week for additional five hundred thousand. They still have an encumbrance for five hundred thousand. They do not think that they're gonna be able to use that. There were some other funds that also came in to MyCap and stuff from this, from the state. And so there is still a lot of money that's out there, so that's gonna revert back. We can use the funds as the county, once we've met the community need for public safety expenses. And so we will be charging our road deputies expenses and stuff for this year to the fund with anything that's left over. So we're looking and making sure that we've met the community needs first, and that'll be our last allocation.
Then we could reallocate it to something in the county.
Sheriff's Department.
And public safety.
Public safety, yeah.
No food drives, no. No more food.
With the money that we would do with the, well, we do have another food, veterans is doing another food drive in December. So there is another food drive that will be happening there. We have some additional couple of requests, so we can reallocate some of that from Catholic charities to there. DD had a need for the agencies that they work with, so we're looking at them. So we're just making sure that those funds get used in Mahoning County. Yeah, if I could, Audrey, you know, the food drives, the veteran services, obviously, in December, but then the commissioners also contributed to, you know, the other four locations, Salvation Army, our community kitchen. I forget the other two.
Lena's is one, and the other one was Second Harvest.
Okay, so, you know, a lot of food drives are going on, and I think the commissioners did an excellent job on appropriating money to the food, you know, to meet some of the food needs during this, during this time and in general for Mahoning County. So there's a lot of food out there. Nobody should be going hungry this year. So there's a lot of food out there, nobody should be going hungry this year.
How many turkeys did we have left from the food drive on Saturday?
Five hundred, I think.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Anna, I appreciate it. I didn't hear you, Anna.
I heard they bought two thousand five hundred turkeys.
I mean, did they have any left?
I don't know.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, with that said, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.